Nobody. Well, that didn't work too well. That didn't work too well. No, she broke it. She broke it. It's got plenty enough chargers on it, I don't need my charger thingy. See. Now I'm gonna sit down just to stand back up. Oh, let me see, invite myself. Alright.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCrady?
Here.
Ms. Cool?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Tuck? Mr. Huffman?
Present.
Mr. Rexrode?
Here.
Mr. Borkowski?
Here.
Ms. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Present. City Council of Parkersburg conducts its legislative meetings using Robert's Rules of Order, West Virginia Code, and city charter. Parkersburg City Council by properly noticing the public vote recently revised the meeting rules related to public comment in these meetings. These changes included the implementation of topic-based limitations and an expanded time for comment on legislative matters pertaining to the agenda. City Council has always conducted its meetings in a manner that encourages respectful communication absent of disruption and encourage civil and appropriate discourse. The purpose of our meetings is to conduct the legislative business of the city, including appropriations and legislative to operate the city and provide services to residents and property owners. As City Council President, I have the responsibility to conduct meetings in a manner that is within the boundaries and rules established in the previously mentioned governance, documents, and guidelines. As we proceed this evening, I would like to ask speakers and attendees to conduct themselves within the following council rules. Keep comments to matters that are germane to tonight's agenda. Each speaker will have four minutes to speak. The public forum will be forty minutes in length. For those in the audience, I respectfully ask there be no disrespect of voters, including no cheering, clapping, or spooking out of turn. Now, here to abide by these rules may result in removal of certain persons or all persons present in the chambers to afford council the ability to conduct its business. Thank you. Council, you have the minutes of the April 8th meeting. If they're presented to you, do you have any additions or questions?
Yes, sir. Those will be available May thirteenth. Yes, ma'am. I just had them one day, so I'll do it thirteenth.
So, the minutes to approve tonight.
Yes, sir.
Moving on, to receive and file, we have a motion to receive and file and approve the state auditor's approval of the law.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cool?
I permit to receive, file, and approve the levy estimate for this year, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Same. Is there any one in the audience that is proposed to lay the levy rates as proposed? Here in that matter, put the note, please.
Mr. McCrady?
Yes.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Do we have any reports from standing or special committees tonight?
And right before that, if you have a motion to lay the levy rates?
Mr. President? You still answer it? Do you delay the levy rates?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to lay the levy rates, or are there any questions to council? Here in that matter.
Mr. McCrady?
Yes.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Do we have any reports from standing or special committees tonight? Here in that, we'll move on to public forum. We'll call our public forum open. Each speaker then sign up with a clerk, will get four minutes to speak, and the public is a few minutes, and the public forum is now open.
We have about a dozen. The first one is Nancy Wilcox, Sixteenth Avenue, followed by Dan Stevens.
Hello, I'm Nancy Wilcox, and I'm asking you to move on to the bottom.
Nancy, can you use your microphone?
Great microphone.
See? On the bottom, maybe, miss.
It's been a while.
There we go.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Wilcox, from South Park, Denver. And I want to ask you to move on to the bottom, and then you can devote not to move what they're calling an event tent in Southwood Park. That's not an event tent. It's a protection for that stadium there. That was purchased by the Al Smith family, and the city did erect it. That's why that is called Al Smith Stadium. I personally am vouchering to provide entertainment once a month at the site in Southwood for the months of June, July, August, and September, free of any cost to the city apart from burden and in the driving sector with a point of any debt. This canopy was funded and donated to Southwood Park by the Al Smith family. That's why it's named Al Smith Stadium. The city orders did erect it under the supervision of State Cops, and I'm on council. And I commend them on the great work they did. There's no reason to move that out there. And when we're on council, we finish the music out there. And I've been sick for several years now, and I know. And I'm informed that I believe that it can go back like it was when we first started it. We might have had fifty people there, and we ended up probably three hundred. The two hero homes in town, Levitts and another one, came and handed out bottled water when it was hot. But that canopy was put over that stage so that anything that goes on that stage is protected from water and the heat beneath it so the building can be worn off. I've already had five people contact me, that they will come and form with that at no cost. So everybody's upset about moving it. That's all we're doing, just asking, please don't move it out there. We worked really hard to get that cleared in there. And thank you very much for your consideration on the vote. Thank you.
Next, we have Trish Stevens. All of us here in Lynch.
Just want to say thank you for the opportunity to the City Council and to the Senate President, the Council President, as well as the mayor, and also Connie is always great to help see her. Concerning the boundaries at Southwood Park for a bird sanctuary, I just want to say that's a wonderful idea. I think that's a great idea, so I want to thank you for that. And I'm not sure who all was part of that planning, but I think you all take credit for that. I think the second thing is the relocation of the event tent, and I understand some of the things that Nancy just said, but there's a new design for the amphitheater for the last six years. They haven't really been using the event there because, one of the reasons is because of lack of tenants. And secondly, is that nobody wants to sit there because of the heat and the direct sunlight. And so, if I understand correctly, the addition is going to be kind of like an amphitheater, dug into the hill, it'll be a better change of... I personally, I think that'll be more user-friendly, and I think we can get some concerts and talk about the possibility of having some summer concerts and stuff like that. So thank you. Thank you for that. I want to say that I think in this matter and these other matters, and it's a tough job keeping your focus on essential services. I know there's a lot of voices out there that want you to get off the essential services and do this and do that, and certainly, but there are a silent majority, I want to tell you, of folks that are in this community that are very pleased with the direction that the city is going. And it's not part of the public forum allowed, so I will not say anything more, other than that I'm really excited about the things that are taking place, so thank you, and keep up the good work.
Sharon Lynch, New Street, followed by Brian Hayden.
I'll take that paper up, I'll probably talk. Don't care. I don't have that. Can you replace that?
You gotta run up there and back.
Why?
You have to run up and back.
Oh, I can do that. I'm Sharon Lynch, I live at twenty-three Seventeenth and New Street. And I'm here to talk about the music in the park and the bird sanctuary. And I appreciate the gentleman informed me was saying that he must not live in Southside. In fact, I was out at the sanctuary last night, and it's a mess. It's filthy, there's probably ten, twelve cats running free. Can't really clean it up, that's okay. We can do that. But it hasn't been used for the last few years, so I'm sure it has gotten the attention. The canopy was donated by Al Smith's family. There is a sign that says Al Smith's stage. And Al was very good at helping out. I've had a lot of people calling me and telling me, they had, "We did this." Now, I've talked with Dave McCrady and Roger, and I understand that there is a plan to build a new area for music. And I think that's great, that's super. And I asked, "When's it going to be done?" And I was told, "Hmm, maybe one, two years." Okay, can't wait. But until then, Nancy and I want to do music in the park in Southwood. It's been missing for a few years, the people want it back. We're both going to be able to have the time to do it. We've got bands calling to volunteer. I've had no negativity from the people that used it before. We did have a... When we first started, it wasn't very well-used, but when it got started, it was very well-used. And so, I hope that you all will vote not to give the convention bureau the canopy. If they want one, let them buy it. If they want one, let them wait one year, because that's what it's going to take. You know, I had to raise a lot of money back when we started this in the way through the city. And it can be done. It can be done. And I appreciate, we can have your all's vote, you're voting for Southside, that's what you're doing. You're not just voting for me, you're not just voting for Nancy, you're voting for the majority of people in South Parkersburg. And I hope that, I hope that you will vote to let us keep it at least one year until you get your other one built, and then I think the new one will be great. I'd love to see a picture of it, I wish it had been put out for people to see. So if I could have a copy of it, I'd love it, I'll support it. But in the meantime, we have people in Southside that want it now, and we're willing to do that. It'll cost you nothing. And so, please consider that when you vote tonight, and I appreciate it if you do, and the people in Southside will appreciate it if you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brian Hayden, Thirty-first Street, followed by Elisha Seepold, Abby Village.
Greetings. Protocol will be observed. One resolution tonight seeks to designate a portion of Southwood Park as a bird sanctuary. The resolution states that the area shall remain undisturbed except for bird habitat as approved by the Director of Public Works. When I first read this, I was interested, believing that Parkersburg was acting progressively in green space legislation. A healthy community benefits from a healthy ecosystem. However, when I reviewed the Parkersburg codified ordinances, it arose from ordinance zero dash one four zero zero, Pats eight twenty-three of two thousand and eleven, resulting in codified ordinance five zero five dot two one, city-designated event, bird sanctuary. Section A, the city is hereby designated to declare to be a bird sanctuary. Section D, no person shall trap, hunt, shoot, molest, and so on and so forth, to deer hunting. In simple terms, for almost a quarter of a century, the entirety of Parkersburg has been a bird sanctuary, all lands, public and private. This includes Southwood Park. I try to reserve judgment until such times as I can learn more about this plan. I hope that the city had intended to make a bird reserve, a managed land that would be promoted to use efficiency for native and migratory birds while facilitating healthy bird habitats. This would include a comprehensive plan to deal with the feral and domestic feline problem that we have. Otherwise, this appears to be a completely redundant and inefficient waste of time and effort. The answers to my hopes about progressive action were dashed in the Parkersburg News and Sentinel. To quote the propaganda from the built sponsor, "It is just going to be a relaxing, appealing place for anyone who wants to go up there and walk or just sit up there and relax." I am aghast at the lack of competence in bringing this resolution before the council. I could not imagine that any committee would have done the due diligence, or not done the due diligence of basic research. I looked for evidence that a meeting had been held on this subject and found none. This resolution was derived as an official act of two or more officials intent to conduct public business, and the discussions should have complied with the Open Meetings Act. Councilpersons should know by now how to navigate their way through the submission process. If this reckless concept had been brought to public review or commentary, I suspect that these embarrassing shortcomings would have been noticed. Engaging the residents of Parkersburg for advice and input is the definition of representation and is not an act to be admonished. Now, tonight, council body will have to consider bringing a motion to vote and potentially voting on this resolution. I'll offer caveat. The representative body of this council must consider that if this agenda item does not receive support, there may be another petulant reaction from a councilperson. However, if a councilperson does make a motion, another to second, supporting this superfluous and gratuitous resolution, I suggest that the public will judge a petition accordingly. As tonight I have quoted codified ordinances in this event to provide information to the council and the public at large, I insist on reminding all that truth that is spoken cannot be called slander, and a truth that is written cannot be libelous. Honest criticism is not defamatory by nature.
Next, we have Elisha Seepold, Abby Village, Route Forty-seven. Followed by Katie Hardness.
Alright, hello, City Council, my name's Alicia, and I'm resident in Parkersburg. I'm here tonight to speak on something that is truly urgent. A crisis that demands our immediate attention. Issue is plaguing the people of Parkersburg and keeping us up all night, birds. Because apparently that's the emergency. We're talking about building a bird sanctuary. Because nothing says we care about our community like creating luxury housing for ducks, pigeons, geese, whatever kind of birds, barnacles. We have human beings sleeping on our bridges. Parkersburg is bleeding, and people are out here flapping their wings over feathers. West Virginia still beats the nation over their deaths. Fourteen hundred lives lost in twenty twenty-three. But sure, let's make sure that the Malinois have a safe place. Families are struggling to survive, but at least the birds will have a nice view. And when people try to speak up with the real issues, they get shut down. They've cut public forum, they're ending meetings early, silencing people for saying a council member's name, as if accountability is something more offensive than suffering in our streets. First Amendment doesn't come with the feelings clause. Supreme Court said Rosenberg versus Rector, nineteen ninety-five, government cannot silence speech just because it makes them uncomfortable. That's called viewpoint discrimination, and it's unconstitutional. West Virginia's Open Governmental Proceedings Act, West Virginia Code six-nine, six dash nine A, transparency, demands transparency, not tantrums. Ending a meeting early to avoid criticism isn't leadership, it's cowardice with a gavel. ACLU, ACLU of West Virginia recently said it best, "Growth thicker skin, the right to criticize government is fundamental." You were elected to guard your reputation or curate a loss. You were elected to serve the people, all of us, even the ones who make the squirm. So go ahead, build the bird sanctuary, feed the ducks, fluff the feathers, but who's really caring about the humans?
Rich Street.
What was the name again, I'm sorry?
It was Katie, Quarterback, Rich Street, followed by Beth Dennison.
Hi, my name is Katie, I am a member of the Parkersburg community, and I would like to say, as much as I love birds, along with other animals, I think that's an awesome idea. I think a sanctuary for birds would be amazing if it weren't for the real issue we have at hand, that is, she being real human people who are sleeping on the streets with no form of protection and shelter due to upcoming bird sanctuaries that is a vacuum.
Beth Dennison, Seo Avenue, followed by Renee Ingram, Third Street.
My name's Beth, and I'm here today to address you on Agenda Item Number Six, message from the executive. As the members of the City Council of Parkersburg each swore an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, one of the most important and fundamental rights enshrined is the First Amendment and said the Constitution is the principle of free speech and the right to petition the government for the redress in grievances. By the action of the majority of the council, you acted in direct opposition to this fundamental right. President Abraham Lincoln said, excuse me, "Those who deny freedom to others deserve it not to themselves, and under a just God cannot long retain it." So by severely restricting the right to the public to address you regarding their concerns, while also removing the opportunity for our representatives to do so in our stead, you've decided how to allow the mayor to enjoy that right all alone despite his history of showing contempt for many of the city's residents. By doing so, you've elevated his voice above all the city's residents, and you're owed to that of the constituents. This is shame on the words of Winston Churchill. Some people's idea of free speech is that they are free to say what they like, but if anyone says anything back is an outrage. Freedom of speech is not only one person, isn't actually freedom of speech at all. Please do better. Thank you for allowing that.
Next, we have Renee Ingram, Third Street, followed by Trish Pritchard.
First off, Mr. President, I believe the Lou. I've lived in South Parkersburg the biggest part of my life. As I've gotten older, my priorities for entertainment have changed. That being said, shame on City Councilwoman District Two, Sharon Cool, for taking yet another source of entertainment from South Parkersburg. Yes, District Two has a new pool, new pond, a new slide, all of that only because City Park got a new splash pad and pool that is going to be getting refurbished this summer. Tennis courts are a shambles.
Ma'am, pray here, talk about something on the agenda?
Yes.
Let's keep it true, main to what's on the agenda tonight.
Not to mention the new pavilion. I would think there were enough artists in this period that a handful of Thursday evenings could be filled with proper planning was done for the canopy at Southwood Park. I believe it was offered that somebody was going to take over the planning of that. Why, if it is going to be moved, why is it not going to be moved to Oakway Park, to keep it in the city, instead of giving it, donating it to the Parkersburg Convention Visitors Bureau? However, City Council, District Five, Zach Hoffman, and the Convention Bureau, thank you for relocating the event tent to my current district. I look forward to some great views coming to downtown venues coming to downtown. I'm certainly glad to see that the event tent that is finally being put to good use after it being sitting for at least six or so years. I'm glad to see planning, so positive outcome for District Two. I also have heard from a little bluebird in town that the Parkersburg News and Sentinel was sought after to reply or to take notice of what is being done here at City Council. The Lou.
Next, we have Trish Pritchard, West Virginia Avenue.
I'm here to discuss, oh, thank you very much for the four minutes of time, I appreciate that, and I'd also like, before I get started, to thank Ryan Barber for hosting the housing forum next week, so Tuesday the twenty-second, from one to three, and I appreciate him doing that, because I'm here to talk about Resolution Three. The resolution amending the Community Development Program Annual Action Plan wants to move funds from the Community Health Center to Residential Assisted Demolition Program in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, sponsored by Councilman Daley Cool and Berkowski. Building up is always better than tearing down. In the twenty twenty-three annual report, a hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars helped fund repairs for thirteen homes. I believe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is better spent building our community up. Let's repair another thirteen homes. Funding minor home repairs reduces the need for funding more demolition, and the Down Payment Assistance Program gives our neighbors a chance to own a home. Please amend the resolution to move a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the minor home repairs, one item. There are already way too many vacant lots from demolition and a lack of affordable housing, especially in District Four. Sadly, District Four's important voice for these issues has been tied to committee assignments were not on the agenda last week, but were announced with an email, then were discussed via newspaper today, and still not on the agenda tonight. Our city needs leadership, a leader who's not afraid of a strong voice fighting for her district. Our city needs a leader, not a petty little man.
May I repeat that name?
Jamie McCormick, Seale Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Jamie McCormick, and I've lived in District Nine for five years. Today, for once, my trash was picked up, so thank you guys for that honor, what's going on now, but thank you. I'm here to talk about the bird sanctuary. I'm still trying to figure out why, in the middle of everything the city is facing, we're still talking about the bird sanctuaries. With all due respect, what are we doing? People in the city are frustrated. I think Facebook told us that today. They're tired of broken promises, the aging infrastructures, a lack of opportunity, rising crime, a constant, the constant excuses, and while folks are packing up and leaving the city faster than anything, and you're focused on birds. Let me be clear, we need more council members like Tuck, Huffman, Rexford, Daley, so thank you. People who actually listen, who show empathy, and who understand leadership isn't about control, it's about service. You can still be conservative and care about people. Those things are not literally exclusive. I'm begging you, I'm seriously begging you to focus on what matters. Start investing in economic development, bring in real opportunities, help rebuild this city in a way that makes people want to stay and not run from it like I did in twenty ten. Because this isn't about budgets and meetings, it's about our neighbors, our families, our futures, and Parkersburg deserves better, and we're watching. Thank you.
This is the last one, Brett Solins, Nicely Avenue. Brett Solins is real, yes. So we got to all of them.
This is fine, isn't it? I was gonna say, this is fine, isn't it? Bird sanctuaries and stuff. We all know birthday, bro. They're all here for the drawings. They're just here to watch us make sure we stay silent, safe and healthy. I think this is all just a goddamn joke in the name of, what, Cohen versus California fuck all, y'all.
Jesus. I can't win for losing communities.
Yes, I've got a few things, Mr. President. We've heard that the county has a proclamation and a number of initiatives to discover. Discovery here at the county front podium of this conference, and I'll let you go there.
Whereas Emily Calandrelli is a nationally recognized science communicator, engineer, author, space flight participant, and television presenter who has inspired a generation of young people, especially girls, to explore the worlds of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And whereas Emily is a proud native of Morgantown, West Virginia, and a graduate of West Virginia University, where she earned a degree in mechanical and aerospace engineering before continuing her education at MIT. Whereas Emily's achievements serve as a shining example of what West Virginians can accomplish, and her work continues to break down barriers and promote equity in STEM education. Whereas Discovery World Hall Market will host Emily Calandrelli at the Parkersburg Art Center on Saturday, May the third, for a sold-out event welcoming nearly five hundred attendees from our community and beyond to learn, explore, and be inspired. And whereas the city of Parkersburg recognizes the importance of fostering curiosity, imagination, and a love of science in young minds, and celebrates those like Emily who make it their mission to spark that wonder. Now, therefore, Mayor Joyce of the City of Parkersburg does hereby proclaim Saturday, May the third, as the Emily Calandrelli Day in the City of Parkersburg, and encourages all citizens to join in celebrating her contributions to education, science, and the empowerment of future generations.
Thank you. Mr. President, I've got two other items as well. I want to read a couple of emails. Good afternoon, Mayor, I'd love to share how the twenty twenty-five fishing derby turned out at Southwood Park, it was fantastic, not one to complain. We had it with two hundred fifty participants, I'm treating the family, hot dogs, chips, and coffee. Hot chocolate and soap clock, very low fee. I love the volunteering, having the opportunity to talk to so many participants, so many shared they grew up participating in. This was a very generational event for them, the time their families spent, calling time to get express, they're happy to see the property new and updated. The new wall was hit, there's a lot of positive about how parents didn't worry about the little ones falling down, nice to set poles on them, the design complimented the pond. And safe for all, the root points of problems with casting are wheeling in, I believe that's wheeling in, Mr. Director, is incorrect, in the wheel. For getting candy in the wall, the wall's pretty like being, that's a perfect stop football team, special thanks to them, I love thanking myself too, along with their coach, we're also helping, we're helping kids, getting their fishing out, nurses with younger children, Texas fertile, baby peanuts, and fruit picks, good times, a chili egg, nice tacos, I'm having a good time. All those easy little ways to hear their name and receive their shit. Our person, our nephew, this is the best one for years, fishing till through thirty, and we return Sunday morning, thirteen more hours. Team to put the dirt together, did a super job, their goal for big children, wonderful experience, canceled payments, spent time together, keep your fun, they hope they're both excellent. Our community, thank you, long term, City Council, Parks and Recreation, recommend to committee with approval, and compliments, leadership decisions. We give our children the opportunity to enjoy them for a lifetime of memories, a big fan of fishing, and fishing is a lifetime sport, this is fifteen, and I'm a formerly obese person, but I'm probably on some used to fish. Can't wrestle, throw football anymore, and it's a fish. Young, I don't know, it's a man, I wasn't cheating, I love the new wall at Southwood Park, can we get the sidewalk replaced in that no longer matches? Thanks for all the good fish, it was fun for me and the others in my group. We are gonna build a new A D A sidewalk itself, I think that's gonna happen in the coming months. There's another one, took the two grand floor, and my nephew saw the fishing dirty side, and it's one of them. Thank you, capable for working that area, but safe and clean from poor construction. Very pleased with the new wall, it's my favorite, four kids caught fish each, and we took them for land, and I said, well, it's safer, better for the people, and gentlemen, they built it, so I just wanted to share that, I appreciate the work the committee is doing, the subcommittee with regards to the fishing derby, and this school's been actively involved in that for a number of years. I especially want to thank Everett now and the street park, so if there is a one point two million dollar construction project going on at Southwood, and it was, I would have had a fish here, I would have been interested. It's amazing, a dump truck worked a gravel, and about three ball piles of strayer glue, and some construction plans to make it safe and accessible, so I was a little concerned myself, but I knew it was cool, and then it didn't rain on the day of the event, so that helped a lot with regards to the budget. The next item I want to talk about is the city audit, I think you might have some handouts. Your handout there? City of Parkersburg receiving unmodified audit opinion for fiscal year ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Additionally, for the sixth consecutive year, no findings of other than requiring corrective matching or murder. Additionally, the city's financial position continues to improve, improved financial measures such as closing work, is by pension plan or pension program. Overall, the city's total net position, sum of all assets plus liabilities for all funds, has improved from debt deficit sixty-three million, seven hundred and two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars of June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, to a surplus of only ten million, seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. While the city has realized a surplus of twenty-six million dollars, twenty-six point one million of fund balance invested in capital assets, revenue, and cross fund operations. The version of the total net position deficit, surplus, was going to be on twenty-three point eight million from fiscal year twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four. This did a press release, and I think some of you saw it, I don't know if they put it in the paper or not, I'm sure it did. But, you know, I have to thank foremost Eric for his diligence, but really all the partners that I've had the pleasure of working with the last eight years, because Eric, you know, really holds her feet to the fire that with regards to procurement, but they're disciplined in doing things, but they also have to block, and, you know, sometimes that's not really easy, it's right thing to do, and I've blocked, not just Eric and the other department, but all of you and fifteen other council folks that I've worked with over the last eight years to put the city on a much better course of fiscal responsibility to that. So the next thing I want to talk about is the, with regards to the homeless coordinators. So Chief Board gave this report in January with regards to the previous quarter, so I wanted to, and I'm doing this for a couple of reasons. Number one, council asked, what are the homeless coordinators that we hear about? That's a cheeky last time, I'm gonna give you some updates just around. Our two homeless coordinators engaged forty-seven persons, contacted and offered assistance and services, three subjects accepted assistance for addiction treatment, nine accepted assistance for, for help with housing, seventeen were voluntary, reunified with family, or two locations in which they have foundation for better success, six were assisted with obtaining lodging in the retro street mission, five were assisted with obtaining lodging at Salvation Army. Some notable locations, Board, including Baton Rouge, Louisiana, Salt Lake City, Utah, San Diego, California, Henrico, or Henrico, California, Auckland, New Zealand, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and Columbus, Indiana. I think this is important for a couple of, a couple of reasons. There was a town hall meeting last week that there was allegations, there's some comments made that the homeless coordinators, we never see them, we don't know what they're doing, whatever, I think this, these numbers illustrate that they do, and I would say this again, I said it last time, I mean this so hardly, and I'm not trying to pick a fight with anybody in the audience or anything else. Our coordinators in this program is very different than what a lot of outreach agencies are doing. You're not going to see the city of Parkersburg's homeless outreach coordinators passing out food, or showing up at a sushi kitchen. They engage and, they engage individuals and offer them the assistance that's out there. And I've said forty-seven individuals, three accepted some help with treatment program, nine with housing, seventeen were reunified, six were assisted with lodging in the retro street mission, and five with regards to the Salvation Army. So, you know, I'm a little disappointed because, you know, there was representatives from the city at that meeting, and they, they got this similar report from January, didn't say anything. The other thing I want to bring up, there was also comments made at that meeting, that the city is responsible or complicit with regards to the recent house fires. And all I can say is that is absolute codswallop. If there's somebody out there that has proof that a representative of my administration or anybody on this council is, is paying people or setting vacant structures on fires, we've had nine in calendar year twenty-two since first of the year, let us know, file a police report, there's a guy right over there, he'd be more than happy to put the cuffs on. You know, I told somebody the other day, if there's any truth to that, you find the tree, I got the rope. But I think when those kind of rumors and innuendo, it's deleterious. I just think that's important to know, because this is the second time this information has been, the gentleman in the hat, he needs to be reviewed. So, just speaking out, just a couple more ice rubs, we can't disrupt the media. We're speaking out because you're buying three months' ship to homeless, you're earning millions of dollars for the homeless, and then the mayor's talking about lynching people. That's bullshit. Okay, have a good night. I apologize, I apologize if my local isn't, I think it's anybody, but, just a couple more things, there's, is a lot of money spent on, with the York's to operate, and there's not a lot of money being spent by the city, there are millions of dollars being spent in this city, state credit for this possible, millions. I just, with regards to Resolution Number One first, the bird sanctuary, one thousand percent, just burn in real good, this was my idea, you know, this costs the city nothing to designate the space to keep it natural. Bird sanctuary, maybe we could have called it natural space, green space, you know, it's heavily wooded, it is primary focus with regards to Southwood Park is to navigate waters from that park or South Parkersburg, down into the tension pond, Southwood Pond, so that is a thousand percent my idea. I think it's important that it remain undisturbed and unconstructed upon, and I say that, he's not here tonight, after multiple conversations with our city attorney, we gotta quit building stuff up in that hole. All right, it's needed for properly grown, we gotta make, and we've done some of that, I think, you know, it's still pretty ugly right now because the grass hasn't grown in, but it's really, that's, so that was my idea, let's try and put something on the books to keep it natural and undisturbed so that the next mayor or the next city council says, I want to build something up there. That just creates problems down the road. So if you don't like the bird sanctuary idea, you can blame me one hundred percent. With regards to the Resolution Number Two, as related to the tent, I brought with me a copy of a letter that I received, and it is undated, I'm gonna say that about six weeks ago, requesting, kindly requesting your consideration regarding relocation of the event tent currently located at Southwood Park. We would like to create the tent, be moved to the back parking lot of our welcome center at one thirteen Eighth Street as a permanent location. This change would greatly benefit our organization, we hope to utilize the tent for various community and tourism events. We believe this relocation will help us create an excellent addition to the city's event infrastructure, and will provide a versatile and accessible venue for the community. Thank you for your time and consideration for your response. So just some data on the CBB Welcome Center. They booked eleven thousand visitors last year, it is growing all the time, and thirty thousand visitors visited the island last year. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I love the island, I don't go as much, it is our number one tourist destination, our number one tourist attraction. There are folks working on it, I think Wendy Schreiber would like to, to be the number one tourist destination, but, you know, she's got some years to go before, you know, she can make that claim. There are tires down there, this, you know, this was, you know, he sent the letter, pitched it out to council, I think they want to sponsor a resolution, and this does not transfer ownership. Mr. Myers, I'm gonna ask you, this is not transfer ownership, this is just kind of official blessing movement, correct? The way you wrote this resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's kind of the background on some of that stuff, and I believe, Mr. President, I have, I believe I copied or covered everything that I Um and I believe, Mr. President, I have um, I believe I copied or uh covered everything that I wish to cover this evening.
Thank you, sir. About a quick, we need to launch the resolution number one, please.
A resolution designated boundaries at Southwood Park is the bird sanctuary.
It's a long enough.
Any questions?
Let's get a motion in a second. Mrs. Cool?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, Dr. Daly, you have a portion.
Yeah, I have a question in reference to just some of the public comment. If, and Mr. Mayor, this may be directed to you, Blaine. If it was already designated a bird sanctuary, does changing the boundaries to a bird sanctuary make a difference? I just need to clarify.
I I don't believe it does. I I think um, you know, again, the purpose of this is to get something on the books that says it again. And and maybe this is short sighted or improper. If it is, you know, it may be. Um but I just know when folks see woods and parks, they say, we gotta build something there, we gotta have something there. We gotta, you know, we gotta build something in there and maybe use it. What's wrong, I, you don't know anybody that loves hanging out in the woods more than I do. Um you know, it's an, it's an old growth forest, for lack of a better term. I mean, it's 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 a lot of old trees, a lot of limbs on the ground.
He said, like being in the woods.
Again, its primary function, from a functional standpoint, is to get water from Highland Avenue and all the way to Blizzard, ba- basically from Parkersburg South High School, to get, to help that water get into what was built as, I mean, Southwood Park, it's a wonderful pond. I mean, you heard about, it was built for stormwater, that's, that's why it was there. Um and you know, I just, you know, like I said, bird sanctuary, I know, I'll I'll call out Mr. McCready, he's already got a line on some birdhouses. He's got, I saw some blue birdhouses. I just, you know, I think to 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 make it to where, you can't just come in and say, I wanna build this here. There's been, you know, um you know, we, you can't put a playground in the woods, you can't build another swimming pool up there, we don't need a pond. Although, when it rains really hard, if we don't keep that area clean, it can pond on it. That, that's, I mean, I don't think this legislation does anything other than designate that we're gonna keep this area natural and free from construction for the time being.
So this resolution does that even though it's a redundant resolution?
I don't think it's redundant. I'll agree to disagree with the gentleman that commented. I mean, Blaine, I don't wanna speak for you, but passing this res- resolution or not passing it doesn't change anything other than there's some, something on the books that says we're not gonna build anything there. It doesn't change anything, just for.
Do we have any further questions regarding resolution number two?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cool?
I just also like, well, there's been uh several people get up and speak about cats up there on the bird sanctuary. And I have been working on that situation, um hoping that within the next two weeks, we do not have any cats at Southwood. I've been working with people that have been feeding them. Um we came up with some plans for it, and I'm hoping that within the next two weeks. There's twelve cats. Out of the twelve cats, four have been spayed or neutered. I mean, eight have been spayed or neutered, there's four left. And um we have, I have been working with them. There's four people that actually come to feed the cats, I have spoken to every one of them. We're coming up with a plan, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, they will be gone. Safely gone, safely gone.
Salooned at Chinese restaurant.
Do we have any further questions? Question.
What?
Mr. President? This, I'm gonna call in on these cats. Here, once, it's been too long, there was seven, I had a couple cats, probably some neighbors uh. We have a heart, right? They very commonly took them to the uh.
Southwood Park?
No, I think we did, we took them up to the uh.
He means the Southwood?
Yeah, so we had paid twenty dollars a cat at this thing too. And he said they were, they had, so they were probably, they were probably taking them to the third cat. It's gross, right there, so. We do have a cat, it's so long, so.
He means the idea is small. I guess.
Anybody else have a question? Okay, Madam Clerk, the bill of resolution number one, please.
Mr. McCready? Ms. Cool?
Uh huh.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Miss Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexro?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, the resolution passes. Number two, please.
A resolution authorizing the relocation of the event tent in Southwood Park to be relocated to the rear parking lot of our welcome center at one thirteen N Street.
Uh huh.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cool?
Need for adoption of the resolution?
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Are there any questions on the council?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cool?
There's a couple of things that I'd like to clarify. Um number one, when I first came on council for two years, there was a.
Yeah.
series at Southwood, my first sanctuary. It was handled by Archbridge, they were more than happy to do it. Uh however, in the beginning of the third year, they also did the one at City Park. Beginning of the third year, they decided there was not enough people coming over. I mean, I gave them all of food and coffee donations and all of that. Um they decided there was not enough people coming, it was too hot because it's stepping to asphalt. There's basically nowhere to sit, the tenant started sliding off. And that they were gonna concentrate all their time on the city park, which they did a great job with the city park. Um I personally could not do it because I'm a city council member. Um because I could not hold the money and pay the people, that would be irresistible. So for six years, that park, that ban shelter, it sat there and not one person has came forward to wanna do anything with it. Six years, this is the seventh year. Now all of a sudden, everyone wants to jump on the bandwagon. Number two, what happened in that six years, it became a catch-up. They started feeding cats there. And there used to be thirty cats there, and there's not there now, there's down to twelve. Like I said, I'm getting that taken care of. Um no one had more respect for Al Smith than I did. Al Smith and I was best friends, even though he was a Democrat, I was Republican. We still, we were best friends, just shows your parties do get along. Um before we even considered an American vouch for the illness to take the tent from the ban shelter, he said, what about Al Smith's family? And I said, I will give Valerie, which is his daughter, and let me find out if she's gonna give her blessing on this before we do anything. Am I correct, Mayor?
That's my understanding, Chris.
So I contacted Valerie, I told her what we wanted to do. She gave her blessing on it. She said, Southwood is growing, Southwood is looking beautiful. It is Al Smith's stage, but everything in Southwood, according to her, she said, quote unquote, needs to be done by Al Smith. If this is gonna help the convention here, if this is going to help the tourism, and it's gonna help Archford, we are all for it. So we got her blessing. So this is nothing that I am voting for that did not, number one, have the blessing of Al Smith's daughter. And Valerie works sufficient, there'll be also about a lady, which I also do that. So six years, nothing, no music, no one wanna do anything. And then all of a sudden, we've got the blessing of Al Smith's daughter, and we wanna do this to the convention here to help them out, to bring more, uh the convention here will have a place, you know, a covered place. And now a music series, one that will be brought back. We're gonna build an amphitheater, it will be built, the picture is in, get the plan for the two thousand six, two thousand thirty plan, I believe it is.
The capital one.
The capital infrastructure plan. The picture is in, that is going to be beautiful, we will have a place for a music series. Hopefully, this will be built before the mayor leaves office. We are definitely working on it, and it will be a place for music. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Clerk?
Um I just wanna say, my love, anytime anybody wants to help, we're with downtown PKA a lot, and we're always trying to come up with events. So very happy that people are stepping up and trying to bring something, you know, for people to enjoy. Um these events bring economic development, these events uh keep kids out of trouble. So whatever the situation may have been before, I'd just like to propose.
I don't know what to tell you, buddy.
I'd like to keep the stage there this summer and see how things go. And then we can reevaluate things next year if no concert comes to be.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a amendment to keep the stage there for one year. Uh do we have any questions upon the amendment? There, and Madam Clerk, can we get the vote on the amendment, please?
They're gonna all vote no.
Mr. McCready?
No.
Ms. Cool?
No.
Mr. Brown?
None.
Miss Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexro?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
No.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
No, amendment fails. Back to the original resolution?
Mr. McCready?
I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure anybody on the council had any further questions on the original resolution. Here, Madam Clerk, the vote.
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Follow the leader.
Miss Tuck?
No.
Mr. Huffman?
No.
Mr. Rexro?
No.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
No.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, resolution passes. Number three, please.
A resolution amending the community development block grant program annual action plan, moving funds from a community health center to residential assisted demolition program, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cool?
Do we have any resolution?
Second. We have a motion in a second, do we have any questions on resolution number three?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cool?
I have a question, question for Mr. Barber. Hello. I have a question, it was brought up in public court tonight that we should not move the money to the Rad program, basically, that we should put it towards the minor home repair program. That is not what these monies are used for, am I correct? We cannot use it for that?
CBG money can remain in the minor home repair program, it can be.
It can be?
The, the minor home repair program is sufficiently funded at this time.
Okay, how much money do we have in the minor home repair program right now?
Two hundred and seventy thousand.
And how many applications do you get, basically? I mean, I'm not gonna put you on the spot or hold you to it.
Approximately seventy-five applications in queue currently.
Seventy-five applications, and are we able to fulfill all of those applications with monies?
Um the funding that we have is in our biggest struggle, you know, since twenty twenty with COVID, uh contract availability, material costs, uh demand has risen since then, and we haven't been able to catch up sufficiently. So the, so the demand is greater than our, you know, what we're able to produce currently.
Okay, and we're unable to produce that because of?
Partly contract availability and the rising costs.
It has nothing to do with how much money we have in the program?
The program is, the, the, the activity is sufficiently funded.
Okay, thank you. And the, by moving this to the um Rad program, am I correct? That's what we're, we're going to be moving this to? Uh an average demo cost how much?
Seven dollars per square foot, we're seeing anywhere from five to twelve thousand dollars for a residential structure.
Okay, and all of this money will be used for residential if we move it to that?
It's, it's the, it's the residential assisted demolition program, it's a hundred percent voluntary initiative. Uh the biggest difference you see with the Rad program is that liens that are placed on the property for the cost of the demolition are ultimately deferred and forgiven. So the biggest uh benefit of the Rad program, in my opinion, is that it allows for future redevelopment on these parks. So nine out of ten vacant lots you see around town have a lien associated with that property. Reinvesting and redeveloping these vacant lots, there is an additional barrier to redevelop because you have to satisfy that lien. Um so paying seven to twelve thousand dollars uh to satisfy that lien makes redevelopment more challenging. That's why I think the Rad program is, is a little bit different.
Okay, and how many applications, basically, a year do we get in the Rad program?
The, the Rad is relatively new, we currently have twenty-two applications um submitted. Uh we've processed five recently. Um since we've kind of transitioned from this, the DEP funding to the CDBG sources, uh we have a balance of around twenty thousand dollars. Um so that'll be, you know, expanded in a hundred days.
So basically, we have twenty applications, okay? And basically, nine times out of ten, they're all approved anyway, they do get approval. Someone?
Potentially, so we'll be entitled to make sure there's no other outstanding uh recovery conferences on those, on those liens.
So let's say, let's say that we get ten more, and we don't have money in the Rad program to pay for.
Well, we already don't for the number of applications we have yet.
Exactly, yes, okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
There, if I may, um Ryan wanted to ask, I, I have. There are a lot of challenges with the prepared work. You know, Ryan kindly referred to his contractor availability, these are federal dollars. So it's, it's, it's not as simple as, here's the contractor, you go, there's got to be a problem. A lot of our contractors, unfortunately, they don't wanna jump through the doors. Is that an accurate statement? Uh you know, Brian has been in the area for like three years, four years, or? Four years, I mean, he has had numerous meetings with these folks. Um but it's, it's because it is a federal program, um there's a lot of hoops to jump. So that's one of the many challenges um there. And quite frankly, um if just, that being said, but I wanna speak to him in a, in a moment about the residential system demolition. I lost track, but we're probably close to five hundred demolitions since I came there. And um I know, I know there are people who don't like it and disagree, it'd be nice to fix and repair it. I, I can honestly say this. No adjoining property owner, neighbor, business owner in the vicinity of these condos has ever called me to complain about why you put the asphalt. Um we tore one down today under emergency provision, it's a five, probably this one. Um is your term deemed it to be unsafe when you come down, we did. And coming out there, little, little press, hey, they didn't press on this today, that's a lot, you know, a little lot of crap. But um two of the neighbors, man, that's awesome, thanks. You know, um so I understand that, you know, these, these houses, and I say this to you, I don't believe we, we, we paid for them, I'd give it to this program, DEA demolition lien, ERA of a house, that that wasn't the best decision. You know, when, when houses, they was fire damaged, and a second fire chief or third fire to have that house. Second fire, so they had burnt once before, um these guys were so good, they got their report, it was on, totally lost. It must have been, you know, just a little slow getting out of wrestling. So, so don't mention, I, I get it, and a lot of folks say, who's gonna build that? I can't enter that, but um you just drive, you know, I was over in District Four today, you know, Lynch Street. You know, that, that, that structure across from the vacant parking lot, that structure was a problem. A big problem. Um it's gone, and unfortunately, it's taken down in our supervision too because of a fire with them. So, you know, unfortunately, when it comes to us, we can't go out and fix houses that we don't own. We can't sell houses that we don't own. And nobody can do that without a co-matron, unless you wanna end up in a joint, uh, form of genocide. So unfortunately, this uh, the remedy of the demolition is often the only remedy we have. And this program, to Ryan's point, is wrong here. You know, this isn't, uh, you know, they don't have to. You know, this isn't, uh, you know, they don't have to come and click the case in front of the building, or some B D A needs. Um, they maintain the property right in two years. They keep the lot, or redevelop it. That lien knows what. Now, that's a deal essential. You know, we're gonna tear your house down for you, and if you maintain the law, you know, most.
These comments are killing me.
Or if someone doesn't wanna go back, you got, you basically got a free demo. Now, make no mistake, most of the demolitions that the city executes end up being free because we rarely ever recoup any of that cost, whether it be cell. I mean, probably two or three times a year, if that, very rare. So I encourage the council to adopt a resolution to be useful in that. And it gets, um, willing property owners to get slumming away there and get them active to have an unstructured or clear title. Simply just hire them on once a month, keep them up.
Thank you, Mayor. We have any other questions about the resolution?
Damn, it took long enough.
Here, we have another vote, please.
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
He finally showed up.
Ms. Tuck? Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexro?
Yes.
Mr. Porkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
That's the fucking mayor.
Ordinance on first reading, please.
An ordinance submitted in Article thirteen fifty-eight point one-nine, private outdoor designated areas, to extend the time to be all year round in Article thirteen fifty-eight oh two, and includes definitions thirteen fifty-eight oh four, to special.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cool.
Move for adoption of the amendment.
Say it. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any questions on the, this is first reading.
I have a question.
Mr. Burton?
If we're on the left, you give, we have ninth street, ninth market. The end of the line, and we have another drink. And they get down to the fifth street. The light, they cannot cross, it's, it's hot. Cars got down over here. And, uh, first, absolutely wrong. It's hit by a car. What's gonna happen to the driver? We got diesel. Now, if he's drunk, then if you had to do your life, does that even matter? But if the guy is sober, and hits the, the guy is standing, hasn't opened, driven another can of worms. And they wanna drink, let them drink with a rap. They don't seem to be drinking and walking down Market Street, so they don't get another beer. They're gonna have a place to get it. Uh, I think you're just opening a can of worms, but we don't need to open. And, uh, Mr. Lawrence? Am I close? Who's gonna get sued?
The person who's drunk.
Every incident that you describe is fact-based. Sure, there's always a potential lawsuits in this kind of situation, but I would prefer to assume that my person would be responsible, uh, because every situation is fact-specific.
All right, uh, sorry, I can't be more, more specific or clear than that based on the general.
Well, yeah, I would, if the guy's drunk, and he's walking down the street, and he steps out in front of cars, shouldn't be the driver's fault. That's my question.
I gotta think about, I would assume it would be the driver's fault, and it would be based on the facts of the case, conditions, the proof, how the driver was driving, and, you know, the, you know, the laws and regulations are all very basic. I would assume that any non-person would be responsible.
We have any other questions about, Mr. President? Mr. Huffman?
Um, I just wanted to say, this is certainly by no means a progressive program. This is kind of like foundational for any city that wants to have events or move forward with any, like, small businesses bars. Um, this, I, you know, work with Mr. Barber, Downtown P K B. Um, and towns all over the country do this. All over West Virginia do this, and it's very successful. It's, uh, really helpful for businesses.
We have any other questions?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cool.
There is, um, no one on city council who is against drinking. And drunk driving.
That's right.
Uh, when we first started the soda, I was very much against it. And I thought, okay, we're gonna walk downtown. So I quite expressed to everyone, I wanna know if there was anyone arrested, if there was any fights, if anyone got hurt. And how many incidents there have been? There's been none. There's been none. And I said, I feel that says a lot, not only for these chapters that are turning down, but also for the responsibility of the people that are bringing it to walk down Market Street.
That's right.
So I, I have no problem with approving this because, I might as well say it's not gonna happen. Uh, it can happen at any given point in time, just like someone could be killed by a drunk driver at any point in time.
That's right.
But I'm willing to vote for this. If there is a really bad incident, I will bring it back up to council. Hopefully, we'll do away with it.
Any other questions for council? One of those, all questions? Here, we have another vote, please.
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexro?
Yes.
Mr. Porowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, ordinance on first reading passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We stand adjourned. Our next meetings in May will be on the thirteenth and twenty-seven.